All right.
It is six o'clock. We will start with Roque.
Mr. Ogleby?
Here.
Ms. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Watkins?
Ms. Flint?
Here.
Mr. Luther?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
If you all join in the pledge.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna add a prayer to the beginning of our meeting each week we have our meetings. So if you care to join me, great. If you don't, that's also fine. It'll be very short and simple. Dear God, I thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight to take care of business for the city of Kalina. God, I pray for the decision makers. God, for our department heads who are leading our city. God, I pray for our employees, for the work that they do. God, I pray that you will continue to give them motivation and push to get stuff done. God, I thank you for the citizens of Kalina, that you will bless each of them, bless their homes, bless their finances, bless their health. God, I pray for our businesses, that you will continue to help them thrive. And I just pray that everything that we do is for the betterment of the city and the whole. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, first on the agenda, we have regular meeting minutes of September 3rd and fire department meeting minutes of September 12th.
Just for the record, I object to them. I read through them. It grossly fails to document input that I had and I know that others had.
We have approved meeting minutes. Put them on file.
Second.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby, a second by Bob LaTurner, to approve meeting minutes and place on file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have appropriations of sixty-six thousand two hundred two dollars and thirty-one cents.
Make a motion that we appropriate the funds to pay the bills?
Second.
We have a motion by Bob LaTurner, a second by Neil Oglesby to pay the bills. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, next, we have, from the last meeting, we approved a rezoning. She's got the ordinance, the addresses, we just didn't assign it and ordinance number. So if you want to tell the address. Yeah. Or you want me to come back to that? Okay, we're gonna come back to this. We'll come back on this. All right, twenty-four, or I'm sorry, two thousand four Joplin. This was the one, it's been all summer, we kept pushing back because we couldn't get the building inspector out till we checked it, due to health issues. Last week we got the update, or last meeting we got the update, that it was not good. They told him to stop, don't do any more work on it. We voted to, I believe, to move forward as long as the owner was contacted and notified what was going on. So this is just to make sure that the owner was indeed contacted. So just really an update. An owner was...
Yeah, I think I made a motion to move forward as long as we had that.
Oh, can you give us an update?
I was able to make contact with him. He said that he already had everything cleared from the house and he was good with moving forward.
Okay, so we're good to go. The motion was to move forward as long as he's contacted. All right, everybody good there? Thank you, Officer Davis.
Are we at the point where we need a motion to let the city go ahead with it, or?
We did that last time.
Our last.
Yeah. All right, Ms. LaTurner? Yes? Okay, so just a reminder, if you were here, we implemented a timer this last time for those on the agenda speaking publicly. You guys concede a very good weekend. When the five minutes is up, it will, it will ding. If stuff needs to proceed, we will either assign a committee or a council person to get with the person speaking to bring back at the next meeting, or if it's urgent, a special meeting can be called. This is to keep things fair and efficient. So, okay, whatever you want.
Okay, first of all, I have to publicly state, you do not have my permission to privately record me. So, my concerns are, the house that sits at Fifth and Water, it being allowed to remain wrapped in nothing but paper. And of course, I'm going to be the target for everybody in moving forward and saying, "That's not fair." The house that was in actually better shape on two zero zero four Joplin Street, which is now approved to be demolished, is in better shape than that house that sits there at Fifth and Water. So that's issue one, and forgive me for talking fast as I get to see my countdown.
Okay.
And then, the yard at Fourth and Kalina Avenue. That grass is five, four foot, five foot high. It is a burden to all the neighbors there. It's a burden to the local churches there on either side. So again, I get to be the target in bringing forward of not fair, because if that was my personal yard, or a few other people's, if that was their yard, we would have already been that high, been in court with you guys, well past the ten days, on and on. So, we feel like that there's so much more business here that's being missed. Like, did we get enough money for the Christmas lights? Is our splash pack gonna be open next year? Does it have a push button start? There is a stop sign missing at Eleventh and Shimmerhorn that businesses want to be addressed. I got to see it firsthand when a truck backs up and somebody comes up over that ride, rise headed east, they meet the back end of a semi. However, if that stop was there continually on a normal basis, they would know that that stop was coming, come up over that rise and be prepared to stop. So, it is a safety issue, and we are looking... Let me get on that later, but, countdown. And why are the sections between Seventh Elm, that side of the city, that numbered opposite of the rest of the city? This one comes from a ninety-year-old lady, so I thought this one was super cool. And I said, "I hadn't noticed that." Well, if you drive, Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, all the stops are against the named streets. The numbered streets get the right of way. If you go over past a football field, same thing. The streets that run east and west get the continued flow of traffic. The other intersections that come up to them get stopped. If you go Sixteenth, Seventeenth, Eighteenth, Twentieth, Twenty-first, Twenty-second, unfortunately, this little lady, she's seriously paying attention while her stuff is armed, they get the continued right of way, whereas the other streets are the ones that have to stop. However, in her section of town, when she's traveling Eleventh Street, she has to stop at every single block. Same thing with just that section of town, and I said, "I don't know. I'm only fifty-two. I have no idea how long it's been like that, but that section of town runs separately than the rest of the town." Like I said, I was unaware myself. It's a very fun fact, very interesting, but my quarry minds want to know. That's a very good thing for us to be discussing. The upcoming parties and the other things that we are looking forward to, to grow the business. Last week, three businesses closed. You may not agree, two or three, but we lost businesses. We would like to see things like the Make a Difference Program become more available. I know you guys have forms in the police department, but can we not have those forms with Jessica Walker, where our people who are in need of them can actually access them? And I didn't know if she has access or not, but they feel like it's locked behind the glass and they can't get to it. And then, getting, and I said, the Make a Difference Program, and then the program where we actually have Main Street of America, help get us more viable businesses. Something that I've been talking about with the school, surprise, is the school owning a business up here, teaching business to the students, commerce, all this type of stuff. That is something that progresses forward and helps the community with a new business, everything else. But the goal is, hopefully, by the time we hit that party of the hundredth year, our Route sixty-six is gonna be fabulous and just as big as everybody else's Main Street. That's the goal. So anyways, thanks for listening, and I can elaborate anytime anyone has any questions, and we have more time.
I did. I will, just on a couple things that you touched on. The splash pack and the Christmas lights, those are both ran through the parks and recs. It's not under the city, so if you don't see us discuss it, I support it a hundred percent, but like, some calls to Tracy, so. She'd love that, I'm sure.
Awesome. They're always entertaining.
I'll address the stop sign issue. Eleventh and Shimmerhorn's never had a stop sign, and we don't have any authority to go arbitrarily install stop signs. That's up to the city council. The ones on Eleventh Street from Dewey to Main Street, if we took those down, there'd be people wrecking their oil tanks all the time, because those are all designed with drainage.
Well, her question was, you know, like, and I understand the drainage causing a problem. There's a drainage ditch on our side of town that's causing blown tires, flat tires, which was another thing that I didn't get to, but, and repairs that are blowing tires at Seventh and Hornwall. I believe is what I was told, because I was like, "Oh, I would die," anyway, so. But she was, she was asking blatantly why that section of town got special treatment, running separately, and...
It wasn't done that way. So for, I've been doing this for twenty-three years, and we've had councils come in and say, "Put up all the stop signs," and then the next council comes in and says, "Take them all down." That area of town has more kids and more blind corners than, you know, twenty-first to Main. Twenty-first to Main between Main and Wood on Twenty-first, so that's the reason for that.
Yeah.
I brought up the Twenty-first Street, because I've had some folks that have approached me about, "We gotta get that traffic slowed down." They turn off Main on Twenty-first and they're just racing all the way to the state line. Almost had a kid hit at Twenty-first and Duane Avenue and down at Wood and Twenty-first Street, just walking across the road, not realizing you're barreling down that.
Yeah.
Most of those intersections use stop signs.
Well, I would like to see them come back.
And we're working with Brian too, on that stop sign at Eleventh and Shimmerhorn, so, and K. Dot, and on and on and on. And he has what out there, and yeah, I know, I got it. Anyway.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have to address the two properties you talked about?
Nope.
Or is that something you can answer about here?
Yeah, we can look into them. I mean, I've not honestly looked into them, at least not recently, so those are things that I'm personally, I have to go look at.
Because we drive by them all the time, because we live there.
Yeah, we will look, we will look into them. Thank you. All right, next, we have request to vacate Scott Street, George Street, north from Tiger Street, Scott Street, north from Tiger Street, Empire Street from George Street, Tiger Street from George Street West.
May I?
Yes.
I've talked to all the people that's involved in this, and this doesn't reflect what they want to happen. I'd like to table this, and we're gonna get together out there and see what they really want done.
Okay.
This isn't it right here.
When you do that, please include George, because I was talking to him today about it, and he's got some concerns about utilities, maybe through some of it, not all of them. So maybe also include him, if we're gonna do that. So is that a motion to table?
I have a motion to table this until our next meeting, yes.
Second. We have a motion by Bob LaTurner, a second by Jamie Jackson, to table this till next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Cars on the Roof, they are requesting a CMB license. This is, this is beer, sell beer. So they put in their request, CMB goes through the city, just to be able to sell beer.
Make a motion to grant a CMB license.
On premises, yes.
On premises for Cars on the Roof.
Second.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby, a second by Bob LaTurner, to approve the CMB license request. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Kalina High School has requested for yearbook ad sponsors. I think we've done this in the past, but we do lots. So, there are four different options. Last year, we did the two fifty option. There's not one of those. Inflation, I guess, probably raised the prices of the ads. But there's a seventy-five dollar, and it goes by ad space. So there's a seventy-five dollar, a one thirty-five, a two sixty, and a four sixty. Last year, we did the option three at the, at two fifty, but this year it will be two sixty, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Can we make a motion to do option three again?
We have a motion by Nancy Flint to go with option three at two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
Second by Chastie Reynolds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Royce Cantrell.
All right, first thing, at last meeting, just like just happened at the beginning of this meeting, there was a commitment by mayor that if someone spoke for five minutes, couldn't get everything finished, that mayor would appoint some council member to communicate, follow up, and get with the person to finish up and follow up on those issues. That didn't happen from last meeting. Hopefully, it won't continue. The request to meet with all of you again is repeated, and hopefully the failure to do that will not continue. So just to go through grievances that I have, issues that need to be discussed, is misuse of public funds, violations of public trust, failure to remediate known hazards to the public, failures to remediate known hazards to public employees, aiding and abetting criminals, failure to properly address misconduct of public employees, failure to mitigate hazardous, hazardous working conditions for the public employees and by the public employees, conspiracy to defraud the public, failure to comply with state health and safety regulations, violations of city code for the public nuisances, violations of First Amendment rights countless times, violations of private property rights many times, violations of competitive bidding practices, failure to establish and implement employee oversight standards, coma violations, violations of the Open Records Act and the Freedom of Information Act, failure to stop government giveaway to business associates, members of this government, insider information, usage of that information in violation of code and state law, arbitrary and capricious enforcement of city codes, utility compliance violations, illegal use, and failure to mitigate hazardous waste, misuse of authority of this government office and the offices that each of you hold, poor workmanship, false reports to KDAG, deceptive reporting to government businesses, falsifying and failure to properly document government documents, weaponization of city resources. And I will say that along Phil Street, there certainly are concerns all up and down it that need to be addressed. Again, most of those, I would say, are probably code issues, but there's probably, I believe there's some other concerns other than just code issues in the city. So I have, excuse me?
What street was that? Did you say a street?
Fifth.
Fifth. All right. Next, we have Curtis Seaver, he's not here, right? Requested to vacate Street. Holken McGuire?
No, just McGuire.
So he's requested to vacate just McGuire Street. Josh spoke to the two other landowners around, correct?
Yeah, Lance Nichols and Jeremy Scrub, the Green Investments. This was one that Lance brought up. Doug Abel is still here, so it's been a few years ago. And it never got actually done. McGuire Street's never been moved.
Is McGuire behind Curtis's house?
No, this will be, it would be a road that used to run through the trailer park, but it was actually never built on the trailer park. It's just grass. It's hard. Part of it's gravel and part of it's grass and yard. But Curtis has purchased or is purchasing the old trailer park property from Lance, and then Jeremy has the property to the north side of it. Fifteen, sixteen, I think, I believe so.
So you said both, Jeremy and Lance were okay with it? No issues with utilities?
No, utilities are on the outside of that property because it's true, it might have been here.
And what was his reasoning?
I don't know. If you had one, other than it's not really a street there. Probably just the, they're gonna build a shop there, and I think they're buying the property that Jeremy has now to build, helping there.
Okay, so, you got something to say?
I find it odd that Lance owns two sides of it. And I talked to Lance, I didn't realize that he owned the west side. I knew he owned where he's building his little homes right now, but somebody comes in and asks to vacate streets that they're technically a block away from, so.
No, he's buying the trailer park from Lance.
Well, I understand what he's buying, but I'm saying he technically doesn't own it right now.
Yeah, but Lance is, Lance is on the opposite side.
Yeah, I've talked to Lance also.
You got the same story?
Well, he didn't tell me Curtis was buying it. I was trying to find out how come somebody was trying to vacate streets. He said he didn't have a part of time with it. I'm still, I still started to have problems with vacating streets whenever we don't know future of what's gonna happen development. So if McGuire actually ran all the way straight through, yes, part of it is grass, but then again, we're vacating the street, or potentially something happens, so.
It's, if there were more plans, I'd have to talk to Dave, so.
Today last was good visiting.
He didn't, he didn't say he had a problem with it either. He didn't tell me he had a problem with vacating streets. My concern about vacating. Yeah, I mean, we just ran into this a few weeks ago, where Barnes Street up in Empire got vacated. It's an oh-nine ordinance, and then somebody bought behind them, and now they have to go out of their way to get to where they really want to build. Now, I understand we have developed, developed roads on the north and south side of this, but it's still the very same issues. We've got a plotted road. If nothing happens, people can say we plan stuff all the time, and we see lots of plans just kind of fall through. But at the end of the day, if we start seeing something development, I say that's when we can look at it again. But until then, it's just a bunch of empty promises. It's kind of like trying to collect a hundred percent of your tax dollars. It never really happens, property taxes, so.
So you would like to see something happen before?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not into vacating stuff, because there's, right now, the deed says Lance. He owns both sides of it. Jeremy owns up there. We can talk about what we're gonna buy and what we're gonna do, but why vacate something until we start seeing some kind of traction on something? Makes no sense to me. That's just my two cents. I mean, I'm one vote out of seven, so.
Five.
Five. Oh, well, Mrs. Um...
Any other thoughts? Anybody wanna, I mean, you can't proceed without a motion?
Well, I've been out in that area, just mailmaning, but I also, if I can see it, Curtis is planning on building on that. I would want that grassy area vacated. He can have the whole thing built on it, but...
He may be putting the cart before the horse a little bit, but I think where he wants to build, he would be, he wouldn't be the offset of the setback requirement. So maybe he needs to go a little further in his process. But we actually told him that this had been vacated, because it went through the council, it just never got done. Three years ago, so.
We have a question about vacating. Maybe I can ask it later. I don't understand it. Maybe you can explain it.
Yeah. So, we could ask one of them to reach out, meaning one of them, Tracy maybe, or Josh, to reach out to Curtis and say maybe show a little bit of progress or something, and then maybe bring it back?
Yeah, it's clear at the last several meetings, I'm definitely not against vacating something whenever we have some traction to move forward. But whenever it's a plan, and that's all we have, I mean, I think the city has seen stuff like that fall through several times, especially whenever you look and say, "Donate property for a dollar, here's what I'm gonna do," you know, it never really happens.
Right.
So, I mean, to me, it's, if somebody's serious about it, that's fine. I think it would be smart for the city, we'd be doing our due diligence to make them put forth a little more of a financial effort and the whole nine yards before we just start vacating. Because how are we gonna get it back? Oh, it didn't happen. We wanted the street back in the future. It doesn't happen.
Right.
But it's still a conversation. It's just a conversation.
If I may pick up on what Josh had said. I think, Josh, I remember you, what you brought up, that actually it had been vacated in the past. Meeting minutes reflected that, but then it just never followed through. There was another gentleman that brought that same issue up once before.
Is that in the minutes, then? Three years ago.
Yeah, she hasn't found it, so. So we'll see if Tracy, are you okay with reaching out to Curtis? She can make contact with Curtis, let him know if everybody is under the same opinion, or at least agreement, as far as that goes, if nobody wants to move forward with it. And if he plans to do progress, and he does show some progress, then he can come back. Everybody okay with that? Yes, okay. All right, Ms. Allen?
I'll just read mine easier that way. I've been concerned about our little town for quite some time. I was disturbed when they locked the city clerk's office and changed to an automated phone system. Now, I understand why these changes were necessary. Our town was once a safe and peaceful place to live. It has now been taken over by Royce Cantrell and his many lawsuits and constant bullying. His lawsuits have cost the taxpayers a considerable amount of money and will continue to do so. Every time he enters another motion or adds more people to his lawsuit, the lawyers must respond, costing the taxpayers more money. Anyone interested in reading the lawsuit can do so online, but be prepared for hours of reading. If you read it, your eyes will be open to a much different account than Royce Payne's on his self-serving "Poor Me" webpage. Royce is continually screaming, "What are they hiding?" I think we, the people, should be asking him what he is hiding. If his poverty is the size he claims for tax purposes, then why threaten every... If his poverty is the size he claims for tax purposes, then why threaten every official who gets near it? Any honest, law-abiding citizen would let them measure the outside. So what is Royce hiding? We should all be fed up with paying for him, the interruption to city business, harassment of our city employees, and him monopolizing every city council meeting with endless threats and constant bullying. This is not Royce's town. This is every resident's town. It's time our once peaceful town is returned to all of us. Enough is enough.
Thank you. Hey, Ms. Allen, wait, wait one second. We will address your vacating question. You asked how, how vacate first. So, just like you see a lot of times, anybody can request, and there's a form to fill out, um, on where they would like to, to vacate, and it just has to be plotted. So it could be something like that, like grass is grown up, it may not be an actual looking street, but if it's plotted. So they request, um, do you have a form here? I don't even know what all the form says. They, you know, ask for, um, easements, and ask for property owners, and then ask for a reasoning and, uh, neighboring, I don't know how far out you have to go, but anybody that it would affect, and ask for all of that. And then I believe all of the neighboring residents have to sign an agreement, correct? And then it comes in, um, you know, we can either approve it or not approve it. And so just like that, you know, sometimes it's become issues, um, you know, who, we've done it before in the past or not, um, so anyway, it's a fairly simple process, really, if there's no issues. Um, you know, utilities are always questioned because if we vacate a road, there's utilities under it or something that could always be an issue, but.
Because it's kind of just seems like the city is giving away land.
When you vacate a road?
And then somebody just takes it over and does what they want with it. I mean, and that doesn't seem right, and they don't pay taxes on it, hog it up with their equipment, do whatever they want. And I, and it just seems like it is given away, and I don't understand why you'd want it.
Yeah, they have to pay taxes. It's basically taking a piece of property and turning it into a taxable piece of property. The city owns it, it's not taxable.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then we don't have to maintain it either.
Okay.
Ms. Allen, what happens, like I say, uh, if we vacate a roadway, the people on this side and the people on this side gain that property. The property line becomes the middle of where the road was.
Okay.
So that's what happens to it. It doesn't, doesn't go into some Bolivia space somewhere.
That's what I read was that. It's divided amongst the other property owners, but I know a street where that didn't happen. So, it just seems like giving away property to somebody who's scaling it anyway, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, last thing, we tabled, um, the request for Blocktoberfest, which is being held, or is requesting to be held on October twelfth. This was to close the road, correct? Um, so, there were kind of two issues going on, if you remember, so there was a request, request for that, and then Gearheads was also having an event the same day, and the, uh, the concern was if the road was blocked off, that may hinder travel, because there's a, some other type of, I think Route sixty-six affiliated thing going on that day where multiple vehicles are supposed to be coming through the area. Um, so, in that time, um, they got together, um, and came to a compromise, correct? Have you given update on what your compromise was?
So he was concerned with Lane Street being knocked off from second to the fourth, or Blocktoberfest at Gravies, if I was looking up D four signs, then we can make that happen.
So they'll go away and they'll just go right around and come back?
Um, so, there's a resolution. It's twenty-four dash twenty-five. Um, if you want me to read it to you? You don't like, no thanks. So the time on it, um, is twelve P M to eleven fifty-nine on October twelfth. The event is being held at Gravies. Uh, this will be Fourth and Main, the portion of Fourth and Main. Um, if there's anything else, from Second Street to Fourth Street.
And then Ch- Old Street.
Fourth, yeah, from short to main, and then alcohol will be allowed in the portion of the public street closed off. Looks like that's about it.
What's the time's length again?
Twelve P M to eleven fifty-nine.
That's resolution twenty-four.
Dash twenty-five, yeah.
Man, I might speak on that real quick. I have an issue with that due to the fact that that's gonna block my residence out. The last time this was done, it completely blocked me out. I had to block, park a block away just to get back over to the house. A lot next to me, people just started parking on it randomly, and no, not even any organization to it, but anyway, I just wanted to.
The lot next to you, people parking on the lot?
Right. I mean, it was just, yeah, so I couldn't even park on the lot next to me because it was just filled up. So anyway, I would just like to, to suggest that, to look at that and make it so that it's not, uh, not blocking me off or the other businesses or, you know, the construction.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what other business is from second to fourth.
There's an upholstery shop.
Yeah, they have upholstery shop.
And there's other construction going on there. They're getting ready to revamp the building on, on the Second Main, across from where Brian's putting in Hot Rod Lounge. That one's getting ready, they've started on it. They've actually already started on it. And then Bucksel Pool Hall, that's getting redone.
So those will be open on October twelfth?
No, but it'll be blocking them off from people getting in and out and doing what needs to be done. But again, just as long as we can just make it where, you know, I mean.
Where you got a place to get to your, to your.
Right, so we can get through there.
We can do, that can happen, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. What would you all like to do?
Is the side street alone just not enough space or? You know, lots on the side street, everything, you can still go all the way.
Play.
I'll make a motion up, we adopt resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five.
We have a motion by Bobla Turner to adopt the resolution twenty-four twenty-five, dash twenty-five. Second by Justy Reynolds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The other, uh, thing that was brought up by Aaron was a, um, I'm not sure if it was the same day, but was a, um, burn, a hot rod burnout, I think it was hot rod burnout. Um, and so we tabled that because we weren't sure liability, what that would be. They, they requested for the area to be blocked off, I think that street right by the Texco Station. So, um, can you just have some concerns? Will you let us know what your concerns were?
Yeah. Is that, um, you know, lots of questions about, about event insurance, what does it cover? Have every participant sign waivers, and, you know, timing versus.
They mentioned doing it on Main Street and the side street also, and I was, I'm opposed to this because I see how you tell one group of people that, yeah, this is against the law, but we'll make an exception for you today. You can do it today, but nobody else can. And then what if somebody's doing a big burnout out there, and they lose control of their car, and they fishtail into some mother pushing her stroller down the street? That's catastrophic liability. Not, not just for us as a city, but for the people that get hit by the cars that's out of control.
Noble, have you got any thoughts on that?
I, I'm just like he spoke. It's illegal to do on a roadway. I mean, if we close the roadway, I mean, I don't know if that would change.
So, that's a recommendation, I guess. If you'd like to do something, we could move forward. If you don't, then we'll just knock.
I just seem to see how we can do it with your conscience. I mean, if there's not one person who's willing to stand up and give a first and a second on this, I think it's just something to walk away from.
Did you do this last year, did you decide?
Yes, and I got my phone rang off the hook.
He didn't, he didn't do it approved. They just did it.
Yeah, that's what's gonna happen again, probably.
We had people just doing it on the roadway.
Main Street, Second and Main, Third and Main.
Right, people, so.
Which, if it was Main, that would, you know, were the, the money would be in the main all the time, you know, for ceiling and everything else. Okay, so we'll move on. All right, department heads, police department.
Um, we had a resident, um, request that a fence that was damaged, um, uh, be repaired by the city. It was in connection to the ten twenty South Main, uh, street standoff that we had. Uh, there was a neighboring property to the north, uh, that had a fence that was damaged, um, by Cherokee County SRT team. Um, and he was wanting a repair done to that fence.
How bad was the damage?
Um, the, there was chain link ripped down and a bar bent.
On the backside, you bet?
Right, it was beyond the north side of that residence, so, nothing that we done ourselves as a city or any city employee, I mean, like, but they re- responded, uh, to assist us with that event, and during that event, I mean, the damage was done.
Did they have equipment over there, or was it just?
No, it wasn't equipment. It was, um.
To somebody?
Yeah. Officers trying to get to the situation and help handle it. That caused the damage.
Right, I think we need to replace it.
I want to think we, yeah, we broke it, we need to fix it.
Yeah. Is there anything, I gotta know, because I guess we called within. Is there anything like, the sheriff's office would split, like, I don't know how that works. I mean, I know we called them in, so maybe that's all on us, so. I assume.
Yeah, I, I think it would be in.
Why don't we get a quote?
Good for us to.
Yeah, get a quote and give it to our, our police community or something.
Yeah.
So can you?
Yeah, third party contractor, yep.
Can't, until they have more than one.
Yeah, choice.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll say they did. For a different, best of them.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Court? Uh, City Superintendent? Attorney.
Uh, just got a couple of FYs. We had, uh, three hundred and forty-five runs so far. That's up about ten percent from last year. And we just finished, uh, driver training that's compliant for NFDA and our grant writing, so this last weekend, so.
Oh, okay, so this was back to the rezoning, which was, um, they said that we passed last meeting, we didn't have this ordinance number four. So the ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine, um, is just what it was changed to. So it was, uh, lots, one through seventeen of Empire, let's see, Town, Empire Town.
We, I, we read that. Yeah, Empire Town, the, the first G A. And then lots thirty-five and six. Zero, zero.
So this was for the. So this was for the new, uh.
Yeah, taris, right.
Eleven percent. Right, Steve?
What's that?
Now it's eleven percent. Yeah, just. I was trying to make light of it. Um, so the, the gentleman that came in there with property development, they're building, what'd they say, ten, ten units, something like that? Yeah, duplexes, so that's what we voted on last time. That's just the legal description. So it would be ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine.
Where did you make the motion? Oh, so we're making a motion, we adopt?
The ordinance.
Ordinance twenty-four dash zero nine?
Yeah.
And we approve that?
So we have a motion by Neil Oglesby to adopt ordinance twenty-five, twenty-four dash zero nine, a second by Jamie Jackson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would anybody like to go home? Huh? We have no wire under.
I make a motion adjourned.
We have a motion by Neil Oglesby to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Jamie Jackson, all in.